All right.
Okay, thank y'all for getting me, working me in today. I've got a simple question to the confusion question.
Oh boy.
Alright, so, yeah, I've got a little sample there. And the County Ordinance sixty-two dash thirty-one legal site distance requirement set back in a thirty-five foot setback, we kept some up against papers once in a while, for a variance to that. Well, we've got some issues bouncing around, and what it is, the subdivision has the same requirement with its states located on a public maintained street having dedicated right-of-way a six feet from the center line of streets maintained by the Virginia Department of Transportation. Okay, in the past, I had been told, back when Mr. Campbell was here, for County Ordinance sixty-two dash thirty-one, to look at all roads, driveways, state maintained, unstate maintained roads from the setback. I would like some clarification. Now, the Ordinance sixty-two dash thirty-one references state law section fifteen point two dash two-two-seven-nine, which my research, which I'm not an attorney, uh...
You don't learn law, do you?
And I just do have a fifth grade, fourth grade education that they give me to get rid of. But to best understand it is, Virginia law also addresses state maintained roads. What issue is, the county has, has got with habitat, you for humanity, we've got a seven, uh, you know, a house coming up, and this tight space because it's inside the county they have water and they have sewer, but if we follow along as Mr. Campbell taught me, non-maintained roads for the driveway addressing seven units, we're gonna lose a unit, we're gonna lose property from this low-income housing. Because it's gonna be...
Affordable.
Affordable, it's gonna be, it's gonna be too close for the thirty-five foot setback for a driveway. Basically, that's, that's what I personally think it is, is the driveway for these seven units. So, in y'all's great wisdom and knowledge and understanding with the great attorney we have here with us in the presence, and before our wise and beautiful county minister of allegiance, can we get clarification?
We have our votes, Mark.
On, on section sixty-two dash thirty-one.
Hello.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. We're not handing out any more bonuses by the way, so. You will wait. My question's straight to our attorney, and this hit me after, after some of this came up with some, uh, another one. Under what authority can we regulate these buildings on a private driveway or a private road without zoning in employee count? Our question was whether we can do it or not to begin with.
Well, um, looking at the statute fifteen point two twenty-two seventy-nine, it's not, um, it's not predicated on, you know, DDOT maintained street or roadway, it's, it's, it really says, um, "Any locality made by ordinance require that no building be constructed within thirty-five feet of any street or roadway," and may provide for exceptions, stuff like that, but it's, it's street or roadway, not necessarily publicly maintained, county maintained, or privately maintained, as long as it's open to the public. So, if it's a, if it's dedicated for public use, I think you can regulate setback lines.
And what qualifies as dedicated for public use?
That's a case-by-case situation, it's gonna depend on how many people.
Did you ever take it either?
Certainly, the first thing I would do is look at the plot, if there's a plot of subdivision.
Right.
And what's indicated on the plot.
Okay, well, it's dedicated on a flat for more than three residents, which throws in naming the road.
Right.
So, here you wanna have a road that's...
Seven.
It's probably no more than a hundred, hundred feet, you're gonna have to name it, but with one parking lot.
But, but that doesn't mean that it's a public right-of-way.
Right.
We've got, we've got people who do name their driveways.
Yeah, I could've named my driveway.
Yeah.
I remember having the argument, 'cause I wanna do a different colored sign for emergency personnel, so that if it was a private driveway, then they knew it wasn't, automatically it wasn't a state maintained roadway.
Right.
Which that didn't, but that's an argument from old.
I never could find a definition.
Well, I understand from an emergency response, you know, if you've got a twenty-foot right-of-way, you wanna make sure you can get a vehicle in it. But I don't know that we, I personally don't know that we need to be digging that far into people's personal...
Right.
It's just like on the example you gave, you, you've got a place set up there where they're intending on building something, making it affordable for people, but under our restrictions, they're like, losing a unit and squash everything down to fit it on the property.
It's either that or shift the road and lose property on the other.
Right, on the other, possible to go.
Either way, you're losing, I, I don't, I don't, we oughta do away with this particular ordinance, and set the guidelines within the existing subdivision ordinance, and if it applies in the existing subdivision ordinance, then you've got those guidelines. If it doesn't apply in the existing ordinance, then they can do what they want to. That's what it may.
Well, I threw the fat out, y'all chewed on it, and, uh, y'all spit me out something.
He buttered that fat back up pretty good, too, did he?
But from your point of view, has this become, I guess to Jerry's point, does this interfere with people being able to do what they want on a particular piece of property when in actuality it's not endangering anything? I'm throwing it back at you.
Yeah, okay, I'll respond with a, with, with this. Most cases, no, it don't, there's no problem with it.
Right.
It's like here about, uh, three or four months ago, there was an exception brought to you for Rivendell Road.
Right.
Off the Firehouse Road, which is a private drive, non-state maintained, I don't even know if the subdivision has, even has a road maintenance agreement, but the son gave his, his mother a piece of property, and it was level, well, it had a good slope, or for about fifteen yards, and then it took another dive. It was gonna cost her a whole lot of money to go back to thirty-five feet instead of Oklahoma, she asked for a very, so y'all graciously give her one.
That did with Country Bridge, too, I remember, right?
Yeah, that did a few of them.
Yeah.
That's one.
Yeah, does that, does not state maintained road, well, if you drop it, if you put it in, in the section same as the subdivision ordinance, being state maintained, DDOT roads, you could limit all these problems that come to you.
Yeah.
Or you could, I mean, you could keep the requirement in section sixty-two dash thirty-one, but just define it.
That's what I was gonna ask.
You can just say, no will build within thirty-five feet of a publicly maintained DDOT road, however you wanna do it, I think you've got the flexibility there. You can take private roads out of it, if you want, I think.
Because, I mean, you could, I can see situations where it could be not publicly maintained, but it would be a public right-of-way, so if, if a road was, I mean, a road was discontinued, we would still require...
You'd still require the thirty-five feet, or whatever it said, if only by we thought we had change in it.
Right.
Well, that would be, I think, there's room for...
Would it be, would you word it as a publicly maintained road, or as a public road? Cause that, you got two different meanings there.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's your choice.
Right.
I think that's what you can do. I think you can, um, you can craft it so that you're, right now, it's, it's pretty broad, and I, my interpretation is that it's, if it's open to the public, it falls under sixty-two thirty-one. Um, but you could tighten that up and say, it's gotta be publicly maintained. So, once it's been discontinued, once it's, or if it's a private drive, then the setback doesn't apply, we're just talking about basically DDOT...
Maintained road.
DDOT maintained roads, you have to have a setback.
Right, I think that would...
I can, I can live with that, though, I can see some scenarios where there'd be problems down the road, but there would be DDOT's problems, not ours. Hello, David.
We're just passing all the love around.
We can live like it is, and we just keep praying, um...
No, I think, I might...
I request...
I would rather do some...
I'd rather do something, take care of the problems.
And also reduces the lag. Somebody wants to build something, I'd rather wait until it comes up.
Like, especially now, if somebody comes in tomorrow, we've already met this month, you know, it'd be another full thirty days before you could present it again.
Yeah.
Seems pretty simple, though. It seems like just a definition there would be...
Why is that not there?
I got a feeling, I got a feeling it's one of the things you'd like to advertise in a public hearing, though, too.
Yeah, of course.
Yep.
But...
There goes that effort.
The only thing I guess I would say is, as far as public right-of-way versus publicly maintained is, what happens if, long after we're gone, there's a publicly, the, the public right-of-way's been discontinued, that for some reason stayed, the county brings back into public use, and now we've, as long as there's an existing public right-of-way, the possibility exists that it could be brought back into maintenance, I guess.
Well, get back to my statement today.
One would want a house built.
I know, I know. We've got, we've got one that's close to that already, if you think about it.
So, it would be, it's my interpretation...
And, and...
Oh, right.
My interpretation that sixty-two thirty-one applies to if it's open to the public, not publicly maintained. And it would be my recommendation was that you can just change that definition, it'd be very simple to add, your public hearing, amend the ordinance to add publicly maintained in there, if that's the way you wanna go.
A publicly maintained road.
All right, if you go...
But in a...
If you go, it, it, what's the terms that DDOT uses? You've got right-of-ways, and then you've got, that are actually right-of-ways, and then what's the other term?
Prescriptive easement.
Prescriptive easement.
Where mostly those are just gravel roads that, that DDOT doesn't own the right-of-way, so I don't know.
You see where I'm going, with both those curvallities.
And we have an easement to maintain. So, publicly maintained would be the proper terminology.
If, if we're going the maintained part, but now if we're just going on the right-of-way part, then we need the right-of-way plus that other language to include both. You see what I'm getting at? I can see words.
The way it, the way it currently reads is, it, within thirty-five feet of the roads and highways, and I would, if you could just add publicly maintained roads and highways.
Right.
If we wanna just do public highways, uh, but we can just do what's maintained.
Yeah.
What you were, what you were thinking about, though, was to include the discontinued, so that would kick you back to wherever there's a public right-of-way, or that other term.
So, then you just say ma- publicly maintained, or public right-of-way, or, you know, I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, you wanna make sure it covers both?
Right.
Both of those, what I was talking, what I asked him about.
I, I just, I mean, I don't see anything in the future that would make me think that there are gonna be roads that DDOT takes back into their...
I can imagine that.
That would be brought up to standards prior to...
I understand that, but as long as there's a DDOT right-of-way on that property, it's a potential, and you hate for a house to be built on top of it, and then, you know, thirty years from now, it's forward, it's trying to figure out, you know, Justin will be here, and he'll be having worries about it.
Yeah.
Give us, give us that.
Clear chair, I said.
What would be a new administration bill?
I'm the hall.
And I guess a, a third, a third option that you have is, is, I've, I've given you my interpretation, but the board can have its own interpretation, and, um, you could always just say, "Thank you very much, we'll consider this, but for the time being, we're administratively determining roads and highways to be publicly maintained roads and highways."
Right.
Which we could say...
And you could give administrative direction to your staff.
Yeah.
Well...
Based on the Virginia Code section.
Don't we, don't we need to be careful and have it work? Our staff is maintaining an even keel on this until we actually change something?
If you wanna be consistent, but...
You just leave it to me.
Mark, you trust?
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Do you have your boots on?
Yeah, I do. I didn't have mine on. I know, and I would've worn them.
I didn't even wear my high-top ten, as usual.
I guess another option would be just completely eliminate this code section, and following back to DDOT standard of, of having thirty-five feet from a, just, doesn't DDOT already have that standard? I don't sound a lot, I thought that's what you figured out, that's what I'm saying, I think that the Virginia Code, well, the Virginia Code gives us this, or...
The Virginia Code says a locality may adopt a setback.
If we're changing it, do we wanna let, not get back to twenty-five feet like we were talking about? All in one's move?
You probably wanna do something, just because you've got a standard in the subdivision, so if you have new subdivisions, you're gonna be governed under the subdivision ordinance, but for existing, um, existing streets or just one-off developments, you're going to, you potentially got a different standard.
And I don't, I don't think they're looking to change it in the subdivision ordinance.
Actually, we were wanting to make what happens with this.
Oh, okay.
Or we were looking at doing that, since we had two, two things, we thought they should match up pretty closely.
I agree.
Yep.
Make it easier to administer, but, uh...
The subdivision ordinance limits it to publicly maintained, so you could make them consistent very easily.
Absolutely.
If we, if we change this one, I think, then we definitely, I think then we definitely wanna, whether, whether the committee does or not, when it gets to who's sitting here, we're gonna make it equal.
Yep, I agree.
So, with that additional wording that you were talking about, I'd, I'd suggest that we go ahead and knock it back to twenty-five feet.
So, is that twenty-five feet from the center line, or twenty-five feet?
From the right-of-way is, by the way.
The edge of the right-of-way.
From the edge of the right-of-way.
Well, no.
If you don't know where the edge of the right-of-way is, it's something...
It's the edge of the road.
The edge of the road.
Edge of the, edge of the road.
Why don't some places that, that, that wouldn't work?
Well, I, I try to...
You take, I, I'll just use an example, on the lot there beside Test Drive Inn.
Right.
After I finally nailed them down in Salem, they said, "There's a seventy-foot right-of-way there." I asked them, I says, "All right, is, is it an equal through there?" And they said, "Yes." So, I said, "So, if I pull back thirty-five feet from where the center line is located, and I put a post up on each side marking where that at, that's at, anything I put on that lot past that thirty-five, I'd be safe." They said, "Yes," as far as their right-of-way. So, direct areas an instance that, if, if you don't go by the right-of-way, if you just go by the edge of the road, I could still be putting something within the DDOT right-of-way without DDOT even realizing I'm doing it till it's over.
True, that's a question you can do there.
But, but are we, are we worried, I mean, I don't want anybody to build on the right-of-way, but are, is that what this is really, this is more of a site distance, a safety issue, right? Not so much protecting DDOT's right-of-way, right?
It's another control mechanism.
Right.
In the subdivision ordinance, the language there is to leave the option open if DDOT wants to accept a, a subdivision road into the state system at some point in the future. I think that's one of the big functions that the subdivision ordinance does.
Yeah, but that was, that was pretty prior to DDOT's current rule now, that any road that can get into the system has to be pre-built prior to them accepting it.
Right, but if...
And see, that was back in the days when you could just throw a right-of-way on a piece of paper and...
But I think the idea is, if you're building a subdivision, if you're not dedicating a right-of-way now, and you start carving it up and selling off parcels, it will never get accepted. So, if you include that required setback in, um, in the ordinance, so that you're not having houses built that are gonna...
Impede that.
Impede that, even if someday someone could bring it up to standards, potentially.
So, he said from the edge of the road versus the edge of the right-of-way.
The language in the, um, in the subdivision ordinance, though, uh, it says, um, thirty-five feet and generally parallel from the front lot line where the lot is located on, or proposed to be located on, a publicly maintained street having a dedicated right-of-way six feet from the center line of streets maintained by Virginia Department of Transportation.
What if we changed it to the center line? Thirty-five feet from center.
Center line.
Well, that's still...
It would reduce the, it would give people a little more room, but it would probably take care of all your, there's probably, probably not many DDOT roads that are over seventy feet.
Well, Route eight, two-twenty-one, uh, Route eight primarily were Madison was, I don't think, the four lane through, several places.
That would effectively do twenty-five feet from the edge of the road, like we're talking about, but if we did it from the center line, it would effectively do that while making sure that there's a, a DDOT right-of-way maintained.
Do you have any thoughts on that, as pertaining from instead of the edge of the road to, from the center line of the road?
Well, I, I kinda think the center of the road would be better, that way you have a definite point...
Right.
To measure from.
To measure from, and then it would, it would be in line with the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
So, you know, if it was, I think both of them would be the same, was...
I agree.
From the center, from the edge, it's thirty-five, it's forty-five, it's twenty-five.
So, then, instead of changing the thirty-five, we just change it, unless they have that exposure from the center line of the road.
Correct.
And would effectively do what you're trying to do.
Yep.
Simple enough.
Definitely would.
Well, it'd match it up, and that what you think, Steve?
Consistency is all it is.
I'll slap you down, I can tell.
No, the, the language of the, the code says that, you know, a locality may adopt a setback, that no, um, let's see, no building be constructed within thirty-five feet of any street or roadway. So, it's not exa, I mean, maybe there's some room for interpretation, yeah. My initial read would be, that means the extra...
He used maybe an interpretation in the same sense, dude.
He did.
Excuse me.
I think that... If you adopted it from the center line, it's probably unlikely to be challenged, or to, I think you probably got some room for discretion in case of a challenge. I mean, my initial read would be from that, that means from the edge of the road, but, um, if you make a legislative determination to measure from the center line, probably not too bad.
I'm okay with center line.
I'm okay with center line. You okay with center line?
Cause you're not obligated to have any regulation. You could have, you could have no setback if you wanted.
Then you're right, the way the code reads is fairly...
So, our, our argument would be that, although the, the Code of Virginia gives you the legislative authority to measure thirty-five feet from the edge of the roadway, we're not, we're not using all that authority, we're just, we're, we're making a less restrictive determination, so, I think that's...
I, I like that idea, I just, reading the code section, it's really kind of...
So, how about we just use clarification today to y'all, put it right, and we're just gonna go thirty-five feet off of public rights and, and leave everything else alone until y'all make it...
Thirty-five feet from...
Publicly maintained.
From the center line?
From the center line.
From the center line.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet from the center line, and, uh, is public maintained or public right-of-way still exist? That, that covers what you're talking about.
Right, I agree with that.
Let me pull a rank over here.
He was just wondering.
Now, I'm gonna sit here if I can, that's a bad thing for me to do, and, well, you didn't, you know, I'll go back to many years, but I was talking about a court case I had on a virtual fender, and they was talking about the roadway, and they considered roadway all of DDOT's right-of-way. And like, from two-twenty-one, from Stoplight to Stoplight Hills, they had a sixty-foot right-of-way back in on the way it was now. So, that would be thirty feet from the center line on either side. So, if that's considered a roadway, would that change yet? That building's gonna be weighed on that. You follow what I'm saying?
No, so, see, we're talking about if you go thirty-five feet from the center of the road, but the other one, they got a sixty foot, that, that, in that instance, it only puts a building five feet off of the road.
Off the road, yeah.
Off of the right-of-way.
Um, on the side, it's like thirty feet?
Forty, most of them.
If, if it's a prescriptive easement, it, which is not DDOT right-of-way, it's generally presumed that we have a thirty-foot easement to maintain a gravel road, uh, measured to the center, so fifteen feet from the center, um, DDOT doesn't allow anything, obviously any structure to be built on the right-of-way, and we, or we try to keep tabs on gravel roads and make sure people don't put like fences closing fifteen feet to the center.
Yeah, cause when we used to build fences, we went a little way out here, then, we'd always try to move that fifteen feet from the center of the road to build our fences.
And then on the paved roads, secondary roads, they're most of them are forty feet, I think, unless otherwise...
Yes, they're generally forty, and you might see some fifty-foot right-of-ways in subdivisions or, um, and if there's been a major, uh, realignment project on a secondary, we might have bought right-of-way and bought, it would be a variable right-of-way that we're talking about on Route eight, which would cover, um, like, filled slopes and cut slopes, and the right-of-way might be very narrow with bridges, but wider with, uh, slope, generally on projects that have been reconstructed. We're going to straighten the road and take that curves and...
I'm still thinking of thirty-five feet from the center.
I mean, it gets you out of the right-of-way, you're, you're about there, too, to get out of the right-of-way. I think the code section's a little bit, the code section could actually be clarified in Virginia code section, because, I mean, it says, from the roadway, doesn't like say from the right-of-way, from the paved portion from the, you know, so... And that, that can be a tricky term, but if we use roadway to mean different than just the pavement, we're, 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 just in DDOT, that's the term, when they say roadway, including ditches, but in all cases, the roadway lies within the right-of-way. So, the right-of-way's always larger than roadway. Just keep struggling.
Larger.
You thought it was gonna be so?
I thought Jerry was saying about bringing...
Mr. Yoder Paris thought that you would suggest that any provision of the Code of Virginia lacks clarity.
I know, seriously.
I say, just put it right down the middle, I like it.
At least that's a, that's a point that we call, that's...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I guess on a road that, like a gravel road, you just, we would try to get it to the best of our ability, to make it...
You just get you across it and find your middle step, and there's a speed.
And then go from there, and...
Or the gravel's humped up in the middle.
And you're treating everybody the same, and you're treating every case the same, everything's equal across the board.
Yeah, if they happen to dump a little more asphalt on one side of the road, you know, that's, it don't matter, you know, versus, if you go from there to the main road, if it's water on it.
Yeah, maybe put a bike lane on it, so...
Yeah, it don't matter.
All right, so.
Let's put that in form ordinance.
Yeah. Public hearing.
You figure out what we need and what we've decided?
I think so.
And I guess you take the directive to, I mean, I don't know. Is that, is that what you want?
I'll take the drink given as of today, if I have any problems or anything, I'll just say, these disturbing. I can pass the.
That's a hook.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Say it, Mark.
Just do something easy, come on, Mr. Perry.
I'll be reviewing you a little bit.
Oh, my gosh. You having some fun yet there, David?
Well, I stopped following Mark, but I'll, I'll do my best.
I'm gonna watch that rainstorm.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. I've heard all kinds of numbers on, on that, and four, five, I don't know, probably the replacement we had six.
Yeah, five and three quarters.
Really?
Pretty much average throughout this town.
Yeah.
Just a lot of rain.
Yeah. So as far as our maintenance report, that's what I was, at first, is that, yeah, we had that to deal with. Um, and, uh, actually, I think, I think they're fair to okay, really. As far as what, you know, could have been in some of these, you know, things, we didn't have a lot of blowout. Pipe kind of things. Undo a lot of work that we've done, so, um, that was good, and, uh, we were able to get our guys uh, off working the, in overtime, working through the night, stuff like that pretty, pretty quickly. By Friday, so. Uh, between that and then October's our, our month for getting ready for other types of severe winter weather, and we're getting all our equipment ready, getting our crews formulated, and we're gonna have to, it's gonna be a different kind of winter as far as, you know, what we have to do with crews and COVID restrictions and things like that, so we'll have people reporting to check Willis area works as well as the lot that we still keep, uh, ever closer to Floyd. So we've been working on that, getting equipment ready and everything. Um, other than that, just, you know, trying to do your normal, um, maintenance kind of things this month, the asphalt, asphalt plants are getting ready to close, we've been trying to do some patching and, uh, get finished with the, uh, field overlay, they did patch some, uh, Daniels Run, Huckleberry Ridge, Stone Wall, some on Christiansburg Pike as well, uh, some on Shooting Creek, King's Store, so they've been doing, doing a lot of patching. I go through Huckleberry Ridge, I did some of that, uh, the skin patching on there, actually it looks, it looks really good. We're keeping an eye on that spot on Bethlehem Church, um, looking like it's, it's getting cracks and, uh, might be sinking a little bit. Trying to finish up our mowing, uh, all the other little things is all finished up in, uh, in good weather. They are finishing up, hopefully they're out there today, depending on weather, on Quistenberry Road and doing a service treatment on that, that should be done. We've already done Bill Bond's, that's two of them, uh, we've got down on six-year plan this year. We've been in touch with a couple of board members that have an interest in Fonda Rosa Road, our next one on the list, but we're having right of way issues and, uh, we can talk about that at some time, just so that you know. We're looking at it, could be. I would touch you on that one. Well, you know, on, on these unpaid roads, we generally get donated right of ways, so we, or the cooperation of landlords on the road, if they want paid, that's fine, so they don't. A lot of roads in the county that, uh, that you've done. Mr. Cohen asked me about the naming section of roadway, I was calling for that, we're getting that nailed down, I think we might have a resolution for the board to ask at some point. Don't think by the, um, second, second meeting, or having a second meeting this month? No, no second meeting this month. But hopefully maybe like the first one in, uh, December, I have a resolution for the board to pass on that. Had a couple of pipe repairs, we, we still work on some of them, Daniels one, Daniels Run one. And just a little bit of brush, I'd probably be hitting the brush a little bit more, uh, here in the next month, uh, as we get out of the, of hatching kind of, kind of work. Other than that, that's all I have, I know we've been in contact with a couple of board members, uh, just, I haven't been speaking with the maintenance manager, and so I'm gonna bring all that stuff up right now, we can handle that all. Anytime, whenever you want, but. I'll take any questions or anything the board might have.
Uh, I did have one call this week about Eames Road, uh, gravel road, um, I'm assuming it's, I haven't drive through it, but I'm assuming it got washed out in the rain. It's a pretty good valley going out through there, so y'all may have already addressed.
Eames?
Eames, yeah.
Why is it here?
My, my, I think, but it's.
Well, that road is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the boundary down at the Stone Wall.
No, I think it's up on Jerry's, so.
Ah.
I might be wrong, but I thought that's what it meant, but anyway, somewhere in the, but they, y'all may already address.
All right, I'll find out.
And I, I know there's a few other gravel roads that were getting a little rough, but, uh, I mean, I know good nearby check headquarters, and they were working most of the night, they were there a couple nights, a few months, so. Really appreciate all their work, and I'm a little aware of all the problems.
It did say, uh, it is on my list, the machine gravel roads is Eames Road, I don't know, they made that before the storm, which is gonna get a good again.
Yeah. But I, I feel like all of them were, yeah, most of them probably need some work somewhere along here. There was a lot of rain.
Yes.
Ford Mine is about six and a half inches, and a bit of it come down my driveway.
Yeah, mine was washed out a little badly, huh?
Yeah.
Mine's having a greater problem down there, I guess I'll do a lot of.
So of course, you know, Sowers Mill and Thunderstruck, uh, obviously, um, but I was, I was over in Giles working, and, uh, I told Chris the other day, I mean, I know Sowers and Sowers Mill and Thunderstruck are, are really hard, but I can't imagine having uh, Engleston's River Road.
Other river, yeah.
I mean, that thing flooded up to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, and even sometimes if, hey, people calls, if they're letting loose water from the dam, it's gonna make the river rise and it'll get in there.
I mean, I just can't.
Sometimes before the storm even hits, if, if they let water out of the.
I mean, I know Sowers Mill continues to erode, and I know that's your district, Justin, but, you know, it's like my backyard and it's just, um, I, I, I don't know, if we keep getting these kind of rains and I mean, I know you don't wanna see a whole lot of snow, but it would actually probably be better to get a little bit of snow rather than these insane rains.
Yeah, how many pounds of snow for that, man?
Uh, that's ten to a lot, but, um, yeah, that would, yeah, that would have been, yeah, we'd have been.
We, we might not be here today.
Six foot snow, yeah, five and a half feet of snow. Um, and I appreciate your thinking and watching on Bethlehem Church, because that is getting very nervous, uh, you know, we don't wanna see what happened on the parkway happen there. Um, you know, I know people, I know that people want paving to be, you know, like a, a main road on some of our back roads, and I know that the patch paving and uh, such, I know Huckleberry Ridge has had, I didn't get to do it since its last, um, uh, patch paving. Uh, I will try to get on that, um, but someone had mentioned in your district that Daniels Run pipe right there above Shawsville Pike, that the patching just, it just was very, I don't know, that it, it just wasn't done up to what they thought was good standards, but I mean, the pipe got replaced, and we just have to bear with everything, so if you can send somebody out to check.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, huh, it looked, I thought it looked good, I went over it and.
It was better than the.
Yeah, yeah, and the fact that we got the pipe replaced is what's so important, so sometimes I guess our. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, um, you know, somebody just.
It happened quickly, I was impressed how fast they got that in, and how, twelve, fourteen times the road was placed.
Yeah, that was.
That was dope.
I mean, again, I just wanna thank everybody on our crews for all the, for the work that they had to put in last week and uh, what a fantastic job they're doing, given, given our, um, you know, the, the severity of just the implications the pandemic has had on your crews and how you have to work and, um, I just, just wanna say that.
Thank you.
Be sure that crew there.
And please wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
That's it.
I just wanna thank y'all for all you're doing, and, uh, please pass on to all workers a happy holiday. Uh, I know y'all are doing all you can with what you're given, and we do appreciate what's been done.
I don't have anything, um, except for thank you, I've sent a lot of debris on there, thanks that it moved out of the way, and it was done very efficiently, like you and my peers, so, um, I agree with Mr. Bay, thank you. Hope everyone has a safe night, thank you. Look forward to hearing from you on this couple of projects.
Yeah, I'm gonna make me a bed.
Is that time it was somebody just asked me?
Did visual aid time, I hear?
I always go.
I know, but it's the last thing that.
Yeah, right down there.
They, and people were, were, I mean, they.
Well, this was a toward middle.
But it's, uh, bringing up. They, these little cars coming in and out.
Yeah.
Can't, uh.
We might be able to put some ground over there.
Yeah, I dropped it there one day.
Yeah.
I'm glad it was in my van.
I remember Darryl must hate my road, cause I met him, he got four to rain, and I was bragging on how good our ride was, and and I must have stumbled about Bones wheel, but, uh.
Darryl Hollinsburg?
I'm sorry.
You said Darryl, Darryl Hollinsburg?
Yeah. And, uh, but anyway, me and my neighbor, we've been taking our rights and sort of straightened up.
Appreciate, do appreciate that, that's, I have a little around to handle a lot of.
We're out. Parts and our new bridge, if I hit actually washed the top of it a little bit this time, yeah, and, uh, uh, it is, it's really young up. Some are on the working, trying to get it out before it, it got under the mine and go over and sort of block and watered a little bit, but, um, it, it needs to be machined a little bit. And they're making it around to it.
We, has, what's where this happened?
Surgery. And it's a dead end, so.
Right.
Anyway. It, it was in really great shape. Messed it too, it was in my ass, and, um, other mother nature got jealous and took part of it back, and, um, but like everybody said, we, we appreciate the work that we did, all of the staff you got.
Appreciate that, and I pass that on to everybody for sure.
This coronavirus is sort of hitting them hard, too.
Yes, yes, and it's stressful on them too. So, um.
Can I ask one more question?
Um, but I appreciate it and hope y'all have a great time, Steve. Thank you.
Um, David, can you explain for, uh, pretty much long, I mean, uh, what's going on, um, Old Pike and, um, Tyler Road and with the bridge there at the bottom of, you know, did you hear about it, do you know about it? What happened to the bridge on Old Pike Road on six fifteen? At the post office?
Right in Montgomery, in Montgomery, right near the post hall.
Yeah, Montgomery Cag, but so many of us, why?
Oh, yeah, I saw it over, I did it on Saturday, actually, and just taking a ride around it, it was a beautiful sunset on Bethlehem Church and Huckleberry Ridge.
Right.
Uh, but my wife had to listen to me point out all these, these things on there, but no, I saw that, it's been, um, uh, inspected, there, there's, I don't know what work has to be done on that, but, uh, I'm just kind of sitting there right now. Oh, yeah, it took a lot of that, that's probably the worst damage I've seen, yeah.
I, I'd have to agree with you, it moved that rip raft rock, like I've never seen it move.
Yeah, we gotta patch it back, uh, there's a project in the works for replacing that whole thing.
Right.
And I'm not sure when that's supposed to happen, um, I'll, I'll get a date on that.
Cause so many of our residents, Lloyd.
Yeah.
Run that way to go to work in the mornings and evenings back home.
I'll find out what the, what the analysis of that is, and I'll send y'all on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, in talking about the citizenism, this is in the router, you remember at the church where the drop inlet was at, I told you one time before that it filled up? Might wanna check it again, cause I, I had a couple of people mentioned that they run through an excess of amount of water there at that church.
In Ryder?
Yeah, this side of Ryder.
White road?
He's the same.
Yeah, 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 that's true, yeah.
You say Jesus saves S and H Greens now, so they came in over that one. They had a drop inlet or something there that shoot over. Might wanna double check it, cause they said water was backed up into the road there, but as much rain as we had, it must, may have just simply been all it could carry.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's my one more thing for today. I've got one more.
I'm just curious about my favorite pothole, Jay's, this are coming around, they, I know it's, um, total gap.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Month ago.
It's getting bigger.
It's, that thing is.
You really are enjoying it, or really big if I even now.
Tell you what, when you pull a load of cattle through it, it, you, you think the whole trailer is about to bounce out of the road.
It's funny, I went down that way last week and, and, um, uh, as I was coming around the curve, I was like, oh, yeah, I gotta watch out for this thing, and so I positioned the cattle around.
I looked at that last time you mentioned it, passed it along, I'll make sure I get it this time.
I mean, it is big.
I'm just worried about it getting patched before the asphalt.
Right, yeah. We'll get down on this next time.
I go through there, I'll place a leave with a local. I know they're gonna do some work on Galloway Lane, but there's some potholes on it that could be patched too, if, if you could.
Okay.
I'll, I'll work the other word.
That's the one on Buffalo Mountain, they run about patched over about three times, you know, last year. I know Thursday it came back too, it's possible, trying to get all that water just.
All right, well, thank you all, I guess. Thanks very much, you all, thanks, and I'll hopefully get in touch with you here in the next, you know.
We'll walk out of there, I'll keep that on the real quick.
Y'all come there, I'll be.
We'll take a break. How strong are you? We went all morning, we finally got one, so.